Good evening and welcome to the May 8th Regular School Board Meeting. At this time, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to observe a moment of silence for Amy Miller, a sixth and eighth grade teacher at Falcon Ridge Middle School who passed away recently. Please take a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we will be working from a revised agenda this evening. We had one stakeholder who signed up for special communication request who wasn't able to make it here tonight, so we are going to skip that portion of the agenda. With that change, is there a motion to approve the revised agenda?
I move the motion.
Second.
Motion by Sutchen, a second by Jackie. All those in favor of approving the revised agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a five-zero vote. Joel and Sakoudin were not able to be here with us tonight. Next up on our agenda is one of our favorite times how we start our school board meetings. It is a recognition. I would like to invite co-head coach Jake Whipazinski up to the podium to introduce us to the Dakota United Hawks, PI second-place finish at the state floor hockey tournament.
All right. Well, thank you for this invitation and opportunity to be recognized in front of the school board meeting. Thank you Chairperson Johnson and Superintendent Krieger. And then also thank you to Matt Percival, our AD at Eastview High School, kind of is the person who, if we need help with anything, he's our go-to guy. So, thank you, Matt. First off, before we introduce our players here, we just want to recap the season. We had a fantastic season. We had an overall record of 14-2. We won the championship game at the Rochester Tournament, which is our preseason tournament to begin the year. And we were the number-one seed of the Self-Division in the PI floor hockey for-state tournament, which we ended up finishing second place overall in a heartbreaker in overtime against Brainerd in the championship game. Just a few more stats here. Twelve of the 14 games that we played, we scored 10 or more goals. We outscored our opponents 165 to 25 goals this season, which is also credited due to our fantastic goalies who only let in 25 goals. So, fantastic job to those individuals. We had six players with 10 or more goals this entire season. We had eight players with 10 or more assists this entire season. And then the most kind of cool thing is that if you look up here, we had more than half of our team is only in their first or second year playing floor hockey. So, which means we had great senior leadership and kind of elder statesman leadership. We had one individual who has been with us since seventh grade, and now she'll be graduating. So, we're going to miss her very, very much. But stats are great, but the most important thing with this group up here is that they're just an amazing group of athletes and people first. They care about each other, they're kind to one another, they're kind to everyone that we've been to interact with, either our opponents, officials. They work hard, they're resilient. They are the true epitome of what the Hawk spirit's all about, and that's what we preach every day, is that Hawk spirit. So, without further ado, I'm going to bring up co-head coach Brett Sadik to introduce our Hawk team.
Thank you, guys, very much. Yeah, it was a great season. I'm going to introduce the players real quickly and tell you kind of where they go to high school at and what year they are. Jay Bama, if you just give him a little, raise your hand or step forward. First-year player, ninth grader from Eastview. Fiona Sitzman, Eagan High School senior. Sam Holland, 10th grader from Rosemount High School. Chloe Shabata, 9th grader from Eastview High School. Dominic Albus, 10th grader from Eagan High School. Jordan Johnson, a senior from Eastview High School. Bennett Herman, 7th grader from Rosemount Middle School. Livia Grossbauer, 10th grader from Eagan High School. Kayden Needham, also a 10th grader from Eagan High School. And Reese Martin, a 10th grader from Rosemount High School. Also, I'd like to introduce my brother, who's been teaching overseas for 20-plus years. He's back in the city, so I decided I asked Matt if I could hire him, and I got him on board. So, Josh Sadik, it was great to coach with Josh this year. Thank you, guys, again. Appreciate you having us out.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah. You're setting the high standards. Love it. Fantastic. Next on our agenda is superintendent's recognition. I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Okay, thank you. And more congratulations are in order. Congratulations to the District 196 teachers at schools located in Eagan, who will be recognized later this week at the Eagan Rotary's Annual Teacher Recognition Luncheon. Thank you to the Eagan Rotary for recognizing our outstanding teachers. Speaking of outstanding teachers, congratulations to Scott Highland's Middle School STEM teacher, Jill Jensen, on being selected a Minnesota finalist for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. We will get a chance to learn more and recognize Jill at the next board meeting in June. And congratulations to seniors Marie Moran of Apple Valley High School, Caitlin Bumpers of Eagan High School, Jessica Wilhelm of Eastview High School, and Jordan Heck of Rosemount High School on being selected by their schools as 2023 Athena Award recipients. The Athena Awards are given each year to the outstanding senior female athlete at more than 50 Twin Cities-area high schools for their excellence and achievements in individual and team sports. And congratulations to students and teams from Cedar Park Elementary STEM School, the School of Environmental Studies, and 196 Online for having top finishes in the Zooms STEM Design Challenge. In this year's challenge, students had to design and engineer an innovative enrichment for the Minnesota Zoo's Malian Tapers Exhibit. And lastly, I would like to invite School District General Counsel Jill Coyle to the podium to introduce the newest member of our district legal team.
Hello, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. It is my great pleasure tonight to introduce you to Adam Wattenberger, the latest member of the Legal Department. He'll be serving as the Deputy General Counsel. Before Adam says hi, I'll give you just a little bit of background about him. Adam comes to us from the law firm of Kennedy and Graven, where he was a shareholder for several years. If you're not familiar with that law firm, they practice local government law, and it was through Kennedy and Graven that Adam got a wealth of experience with education law. Before he was at Kennedy and Graven, he was a law clerk for the Minnesota Supreme Court, Chief Justice, I believe. And so, we're just thrilled to have him and that level of experience. Adam also has a bit of an additional background with education. His undergraduate degree is in secondary education, and he even served as a substitute teacher for a year before going to law school. So, I am delighted to have him onboard, and so, join me in welcoming Adam.
Thank you. It's great to be here. I don't have a speech prepared or anything, but I know I'm excited to join the team here. I live in the district with my wife Michaela and my two young kids, Desmond and Sylvie. They're in the back there, so we're excited to be a part of the district. It's been a great first week, and I'm, yeah, happy to be here. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. We have 22 items on the consent agenda. Today on the consent agenda, we have the minutes of April 10th, 2023 Regular School Board Meeting, the minutes of April 24th, 2023 Special School Board Meeting, school board meeting dates for 2023-24, gifts, grants, treasures, reports for March 2023, summary of claims for March 2023, schedule of investments for March 2023, revenues of expenditures report for March 2023, amendment to solar array purchase, facility lease and solar as-a-service agreement with Ideal Energies and the State of Minnesota, 2023-24 Hardscape Rehabilitation, ZMD and Engineered Solutions LLC. Personnel, employment agreement, employment agreement, probationary, termination and non-renewal of probationary teachers, joint powers agreements between County of Dakota and District 196, RHS, SRTS, cost share agreement between District 196 and County of Dakota for electric, election of electronic poll books, hardware, software, and related services, agreement for clinical experience, Rasmussen University, clinical school counseling experience, University of Minnesota Occupational Therapy Program, agreement for student teaching experience, St. Mary's University, agreement with the YMCA and Burnsville YMCA of the Greater Twin Cities for Summer 2023 School Age Care Program. A lot of items on the consent agenda today. Are there any items that a board member would like to remove from the consent? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
A motion to approve the consent by Bianca, a second by Sutchen. All those in favor of approving the consent, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries on a five-zero vote. Next on our agenda is reports. I'd like to welcome Nandi Rick to the podium in order to give us a report on District 196 Career and Technical Education.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the school board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'm here tonight to share the exciting story of career and technical education in District 196. Let's start by defining what we mean by career and technical education. Many of us remember the term vocational education, which referred to courses that focused on preparing students for jobs right after high school, traditionally in the trades. I oftentimes hear the question, "Why don't we offer courses like that anymore?" Well, I'm here to tell you that we do, and so much more. Career and technical education, or CTE courses, provide students with access to curriculum that is grounded in rigorous academic content and relevant technical knowledge and skills. The goal of these courses is to prepare students to be college and career-ready after high school in both current and emerging jobs that are considered to be high-wage, high-skill, and in-demand. So, how do we do that? The foundation of a CTE course is built on hands-on, authentic learning. They include opportunities for experiential learning activities such as field trips, job shadowing, and participation in student organizations. They may offer early college credit and industry-recognized certifications. They rely on the feedback and guidance of business and industry partnerships. And they are aligned with career fields, clusters, and pathways. We refer to this visual as the career wheel. In the center of the wheel, there are six career fields that include agriculture, health sciences, human services, business, arts communications and information systems, and engineering, manufacturing, and technology. Under the career fields, there are 16 career clusters, which target even more specific areas within business and industry. In District 196, we offer CTE courses in each of the six career fields and in all 16 career clusters. We have something for everyone, which is why more than 10,000 high school credits are awarded each year in CTE classes in District 196. CTE courses are represented primarily in five departments, including business education, which courses, which includes courses such as accounting, marketing, management, and computer science. Family consumer science represents the career pathways of education, culinary arts and design. Technology, engineering, and manufacturing departments are offering courses in the trades through woods and metals, as well as in drafting, engineering, and transportation. And work-based learning courses support students in the development of job readiness skills, both in the classroom and in the community. Our fifth department is career development. Career development courses are best described as capstone classes. While they are still exploratory in nature, they are designed to provide juniors and seniors with the opportunity to go deeper within a career field. This is not always an easy task. The workforce is changing daily, so our challenge is to be as relevant in our programs as possible. In 2013-14, 597 students registered for a career development course. Going into the 23-24 school year, that number has increased to over 1,000. Here are a few things that are getting students excited about taking career development courses. In 2017, we pursued NATF certification of our vehicle services program. This process aligned our automotive curriculum and equipment to current industry standards. Additionally, the process enhanced our partnerships with companies like Luther Automotive, Superior Service Center, Walzer Automotive Group, and Dakota County Technical College, and provided opportunities for students to do internships and obtain ASE certifications. In 2018, construction was added back into the career development portfolio. This course provides students with the opportunity to explore all aspects of the construction industry, including framing, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, and both interior and exterior finishing through the production of a tiny house. And most recently, in the 1920 school year, we piloted the first section of the Certified Nursing Assistant Training Program with 10 students. This program has grown to nine sections and has the capacity to serve 120 students each year. Since the induction of this program, more than 100 District 196 students have passed the certification exam to become registered nursing assistants with the Minnesota Department of Health. Our current project is focused on the growing needs of our aviation program. In 2015, 16 students participated in the aviation course. Going into the 23-24 school year, our enrollment has increased nearly six times that. I believe this is a direct result of the work that we have done to update our curriculum, to add access to the ground school certification exam, and to expand our programming to include drones. We are also updating our flight simulators and increasing opportunities for students to connect with local flight schools and industry professionals. This past month, 115 District 196 students attended a tour at North Star Aviation in Mankato, where they learned more about the aviation industry and post-secondary options at Minnesota State Mankato. I could share 1,000 stories about the amazing work happening in the District 196 Career and Technical Education programs, but I'll stop there for tonight. Thank you, Chairperson Johnson, members of the school board, and Superintendent Krieger, for the opportunity to tell you about the impact District 196 is making on the workforce of tomorrow.
Here. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
This is truly one, like a hidden gem in District 196. I think people think we don't do this, and they say, "Well, it's important to have kids get ready for college. It's also very important to have kids ready for a career." And it, the high level of the rigorous academics that this goes, that this, that we provide, and the relevant technologies, to me, just blows the socks off of it. And when you talk about all of the, all of the, of all of our partners with companies, it's amazing of the partnerships that District 196 has developed and offers students years ago, and maybe when there was only 16 kids in aviation, I got to fly with them. And when we were on our way to Hutchinson, I was thinking, "I hope somebody was on the plane that had done this before." It was like, this is kind of amazing. But isn't it amazing that we've got over what, over 200 or over 100 students in aviation?
Yes, this, this next round of registrations was close to 100 students, which is requiring us to add another section and expand the space in which we're teaching in. We've run out of space.
Comes all back to space, exactly. Don't forget to vote.
It's a good problem to have.
Because it comes back to space. It might not have said we were going to use our space for career and technical education.
Right.
But we are using our spaces for all of our kids, and that is one of, that's areas where we are short on space and can use. When you, when your program grows, you've got to have more space in the room to... And I know that the kids that are doing aviation, the partnerships that you've developed with Mankato State have been awesome, that kids can get, you know, right down, and they've got, they've got a pipeline, they know where they're going. And we could, as you said, we could go on for lots of time with all of those partnerships, that they can go right to DCTC with credits in automobile service, and they could go, you know, different places with their, with the little, with the experience from the tiny house, and, and just amazing things. So, congratulations to everybody who helps in this program, to all the students who step up and take these programs and find them beneficial, and to the partners that District 196 has developed over the years, because this really makes this program shine.
It's great work. I'm thrilled to be doing it.
Great work, and it's our secret, evidently.
Thank you. Sutchen?
I just also wanted to echo a lot of what Jackie said. Thank you, right? I think whether it's a hidden or now less-hidden gem, it is a gem because of wonderful people like you who work behind it and to make it what it is. It constantly amazes me about the work that you and the team put together to give it not just relevant experiences, but contemporary experiences. I mean, the trades field continues to evolve. It isn't just a set-and-forget. And I think the work you do to make sure that we're bringing in the right career pathways with the right experiences and partnerships takes a lot of work. And I'm very grateful to you and the, and the team behind this to bring these services to our students and ultimately benefit them and the communities in which they live. So, thank you, and just wonderful work.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? I just wanted to say one thing, too. In addition to everything that was said in the thank you, but, you know, and I think about what our job here is in District 196, right? It's really, it's really helping all of our students prepare for success in their future adult life, right? That's really what we do.
Absolutely.
And this program is such a critical component of that. It's another pathway that helps students that need that. I mean, I think you said over, we've had over 100 students walk down to get their diploma as also a registered nursing assistant through this program. That's amazing.
It is amazing.
And we need to celebrate that. So, thank you for everything you do and everything you put into this program.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we are moving into old business. I'd like to call up Kaia Bruce to the podium to discuss Administrative Regulation 801.5AR.
Great. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'm here tonight to share with you the second reading of the proposed fee changes to Administrative Regulation 801.5AR, Community Use of Facilities. Community education is responsible for scheduling the use of district facilities outside of the regular school day. Fees are charged to users to offset the costs of staffing and maintenance during these hours. The last regular fee increase was four years ago for the 2019-20 school year. The proposed fees reflect a 4%-20% increase and are comparable to the fees charged in our neighboring districts and throughout the metro area. This is the second reading, and therefore, an action item, and I kindly request that you approve these proposed fee changes.
Thank you. This is an action item tonight, so before I go for comment, is there a motion to approve?
I will move approval.
Second.
Motion by Jackie, and a second by Art. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members? Seems pretty straightforward, and this is the second reading, so we had a motion to approve by Jackie, seconded by Art. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a five-zero vote.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us to new business. I would like to welcome Jill Coyle, Stephanie Ochoki, and Violetta Hernandez-Espinosa to the podium to discuss the overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
Good evening, members of the board, Chairperson Johnson and Mary Krieger, our superintendent. It is that time of the year again, spring in the school district, and as a result, it's time to take a look at our overview of student rights and responsibilities. As a reminder, the overview of student rights and responsibilities is a handbook that goes home to all of our families in August of the year, and it provides information to students and our families about a variety of different policies and notices in School District 196, including our discipline policy. Covers a broad range of topics, ranging from data privacy, health and safety, student bullying, nutrition services, on and on. And as I said, it does include our student discipline policy, which comprises a pretty good chunk of, of the handbook. Just for your benefit, here is this year's handbook. Again, it goes home in August. We are exploring options for sending it to our families electronically. Won't be for this year, but we're taking a look at whether or not any of those policies that I mentioned need to be delivered, you know, via mail, or if we can do it electronically and with, if we'd be able to reach all of our families if we did that. So, stay tuned next year on that as a possible change. Some of the notices and policies are those that we are required by law to provide to our families. Others are just information that we thought would be helpful to our families. I want to give you some reminders as well about the process that we use to propose changes to the handbook every year. We do some changes, including updating the handbook to match changes that we made to our policies throughout the year. We do some catch-up with laws that may have changed the preceding year, and so, some of that you'll see tonight. I will pause here and notice that we're doing this a bit later than usual, so we may even be able to catch this year's changes to student discipline and other types of laws. We'll see if the legislature is able to conclude their work in May, and if we have enough time to unpack those changes, but you may see some additional changes coming to you in June based on what the legislature does, so stay tuned for that as well. Beyond that, we solicit input from all of our schools. We're required by law to do that. We also solicit input from various district departments and receive suggested changes that way. Those proposed changes then get vetted by the superintendent's cabinet. They go back to principal meetings, and ultimately, they go to the Policy Review Committee, so that it's multiple levels of review before they come to the full board as they have tonight. This year, we have an added piece to the process. About a year and a half ago, we assembled a committee. We call it the 503.3AR Committee. Not a snappy name, we know, but that's what we came up with. 503.3AR is our regulation on student discipline, and the charge of this committee, and you'll hear more about that later, was to take a really hard look at our discipline policy, make sure that it was equitable for all students, created safe learning environments for all students, and matched our values as a school district. You'll hear more about that in a bit, but know that this year's proposed changes was influenced by that committee work as well. Continuing on, I'm going to talk briefly about some of those proposed changes for 23-24. You all would have received a copy of the proposed changes, a line-by-line, strikeout version that shows all of the changes and underline for the additions, strikeout for the deletions. But briefly, some of the more major things that we've done is we've included more information, making sure that translations and interpretations are available for families for whom English is not their first language. We're also including a QR code right on the front of the book that goes home that will take families right to our website where multiple translations can be found of the book. We included a reference to our gender inclusion regulation. We included some updates to our section on special education records to better match the states. records to better match the state's statement with respect to special education records. We updated our health and safety notices to provide a little bit more information to our families about topics like pest management, asbestos, and indoor air quality. We updated our student nutrition section to reflect the fact that meals are now free for all in the state of Minnesota, so we needed to do some revision to our language in that regard. We included more information about digital tools and digital citizenship. This is one of those provisions that's a catch-up to the law of last year, where there were some provisions in the law that went into place about notifying families about the digital tools that we use. So that is a new and improved section of the handbook this year. Continuing on with respect to student discipline changes, again, you've got all of the changes in the book, but essentially we've added language emphasizing conflict resolution and skill building for students experiencing behavioral challenges. We added elementary disciplinary responses for all disciplinary categories. We found there were some categories where we just didn't address the elementary school, and we felt it was most appropriate to at least address it in all categories. So that's been added. We revised the proposed disciplinary responses or language revisions for sixteen additional categories of student behavior. We deleted the definition of cyberbullying. Not that we don't still regulate cyberbullying, we do, but it's fully taken care of within the general bullying category. And then finally, we added a new category titled Physical Contact Student that's intended to address physical contact between students that doesn't rise the level of fighting, but yet our principals wanted a tool for dealing with it. With that then, I am at this point going to turn the presentation over to Stephanie and Violetta. They were our co-chairs of the 503.3 AR Committee. They'll tell you about more about the work of that committee and some of the recommendations coming out of that committee.
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, Superintendent Krieger, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board. My name is Stephanie Ochoki. I'm the Student Support Coordinator for District 196, and I'm pleased to be here tonight with my colleagues to provide you some additional background and information, as Jill had named, our 503.3 AR Committee, which was focused on the regulation, our administrative regulation on student behavior, expectations, and responses for behavior. Our committee began back in December of 2021, and at that time, we worked very hard to make sure that we were always coming back to both our charge and our driving question. As stated here, the charge of the 503.3 AR Committee was to review the district's student behavior expectations and responses to behavior and to make recommendations for improvement. That charge alongside the driving question were very much in alignment with the process, which Jill has already spoken to you about tonight, as well as further engagement we had with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights that I'll be sharing about next. But that driving question was, does the regulation reflect our commitment to equity, safety, and the social and emotional well-being of our students? Additional background, which led to the work of this committee, as I named, we had our charge and our driving question, but I also made note of our engagement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. We engaged in an agreement with MDHR because we had disparities in our suspension rates, disparities in our suspension rates for our students of color and our students receiving special education services as are reported in the DIRR system, the disciplinary incident reporting system. And District 196, along with other districts across the state, engaged with MDHR with the goal being to really address and reduce those disparities. So that engagement, along with the annual review, really layered together all of the work that had the district's progression of being responsive and supportive to our students. We wanted to share some of the relevant and recent changes to 503.3 AR that predated our stakeholder committee's engagement. So on this slide here, what you can see is that we have increased and supported our ongoing efforts to address positive changes to reduce our disciplinary disproportionality on particular student groups since 2019. Efforts have included decreased out-of-suspension responses for various student behavior categories, eliminated suspension as a suggested response for grades three and below, adding language regarding the district's commitment to equity, removing insubordination as a behavior category, and changes of language to reflect an educational or more developmental approach rather than a punitive approach. And you can see the examples here on the slide are just a few occurrence instead of offense, behaviors instead of misbehaviors. Additional changes have also included the adding and enhancement of language regarding restorative practice programming. And so with that historical context in mind, my colleague Violetta Hernandez Espinoza will next share additional details on the work of our 503.3 AR Committee.
Good evening. Thank you, Stephanie and Jill. Thank you, Chair Johnson, board members, and Superintendent Krieger. Thank you for the opportunity to address you and the public today. My name is Violetta Hernandez Espinoza, and I serve as Coordinator of Equity and Inclusion for our district. As Stephanie mentioned, and as you know, while our Department of Human Rights agreement expired in 2021, the district has committed to continuing this very important work to review our behavior management regulation and practices at the district, to address, to address disproportionate impact on particular student groups, and as part of our continual improvement processes at the district. This, of course, requires a thoughtful and informed process to make a reality, beginning with a strong team to make it possible. First, I'd like to say what an honor it was to serve on this committee with my colleagues, Stephanie Ochoki and Jill Coyle, as tri-chairs of this committee. Next, I'd like to recognize all committee members that have taken on this work over the last year and a half with two-hour monthly meetings that never finished on time and work in between meetings, otherwise known as homework. As you'll notice, we had a very diverse team, community-wise and role-wise. Since we invited committee members to attend this meeting, I'd like to recognize each group and members in each, and if the chair allows it, have them stand if they are in the audience. If not present, we still extend our deep gratitude to them. First, I'd like to recognize the two students Alexis Obuobisa and Davian Tachakam. Four parents, Andy Karski, Lee Collier, Mark Longtree, Niambi Jackson. Five teachers and support staff, Julie Campagnelli, who's here with us today, Lisa Turgen, Phil Hutchison, Sarah Radke, and Tyson Coleman. Eleven building administrators, Andrea Engstrom, Andrea Loger, Karida Green, Kathy Kindem, Charlie Kush, Jamel Tidwell, Janelle Hangle, Mandy Hill, Paul Tender, Tim Convoy, Tiara Ash. And six district administrators, Director Jennifer Fennman, Mike Eliason, Director Virgil Jones, and my fellow co-chairs. To all of you, thank you so much. That's been a lot of hours on this work, so thank you for being great partners in the work. Next, to make sure we had, first, we have a great team. Then we had to have a thorough and informed process to make the recommendations you are receiving today. As a committee, we carefully designed the process that took place over the last year and a half, which in broad strokes, as you'll see and read in this diagram, include a consideration of related context. We designed, collected, and analyzed both qualitative and quantitative data from our district, and considered other models of, of student behavior processing. In the planning and context phase of this work, we carefully selected a committee and created a plan for the work, reviewed the relevant laws, unpacked the relevant student behavior regulations, and looked at the history of this work in the district. Next, we took a deep dive into our district qualitative, quantitative data in relation to discipline, disaggregating data to identify potential disproportionate impacts of behavior referrals on particular student groups. Then we took a deep dive at a subset of data prior to the pandemic, as well as the first trimester post-pandemic, as well as sharing of other historical data. We did a lot of quantitative data review. You'll get to see a summary of that data in the, in slides ahead. In addition, for nearly a half a year, we embarked on a qualitative or street data collection and analysis research project to ensure strong stakeholder input on the recommendations and to guide the future of this work. We designed group and individual interview protocols, executed them, analyzed them, and considered the voice of over seventy-five stakeholders, including students, teachers, parents, and/or caregivers, support staff, and several administrators beyond those in the committee already. Finally, a part of the committee also read the book Justice on Both Sides by Maisha T. Nguyen and considered the perspectives in leading the work. We invited MDE's Non-Inclusionary Discipline Team to review our Continuum of Behavior Matrix and had our committee experience a circle, a restorative practice for relationship building and/or repair under the direction of Dr. Raj Sethuraju, a state leader in restorative justice. Great. Well, the committee reviewed quite a bit of data as well. As I mentioned, we'd like to share with you a summary of what that quantitative data analysis told the committee, as it stood out beyond just trimester one data analysis excluding the pandemic year of 2021. Some of the key findings in the 2018, 2019, and 21 data conclude that male students received the majority of out-of-school suspensions, a great majority of those. Asian and white, non-Latino students were underrepresented in out-of-school suspensions. Native American students were imparity or underrepresented in out-of-school suspensions, while our African-American students and Hispanic-Latino students were overrepresented in our out-of-school suspensions. In relation to special education services, these students received thirty-seven percent of out-of-school suspensions when they represented fifteen percent of the population in trimester one in 2021. We also took a look at some of the most common behavior, student behavior categories that led to out-of-school suspensions in our district, and we find there are minor changes pre and post-pandemic. And in 2021, 21-22 school year, we, our top five categories were fighting, chemicals, abuse, verbal, since there's various categories of that, assault, physical, and inappropriate behavior. In 2018-2019, so pre-pandemic, fighting, chemicals, tobacco, insubordination, and assault/physical were the top categories, and they are in order of prevalence. So you see that there's some categories that remain over this time period. Basically, as a global summary, the committee saw that disproportionality for the, for the student groups named above has not generally improved and was deepened by the pandemic, unfortunately. So we have, this work must continue, and we're grateful to be a part of that continuum because it doesn't end with us, of course. As expected, in a project like this with the scope and nature, the committee and involved stakeholders covered areas of recommendation beyond the charge of our committee, which was to review the 503.3 Administrative Regulation in relation to student behavior and the continuum of responses, otherwise known as the matrix, colloquially by stakeholders. So today you are receiving recommendations in relation to that 503.3 AR, but you're also receiving some recommendations relating to the processes that revolve around 503.3 AR, like 503.2.3 AR regulation, which is about the processes, as well as social, emotional behavioral practices and adult mindset recommendations that ultimately impact how is a system we process the central regulation, which is that 503.3 AR. Moving on, you have, as Jill mentioned, you have those recommend, some of those recommendations already. You will notice that there's, the recommendations in the, in relation to the continuum of response or behavior matrix had particular intent by the committee. And this was, again, committee input as well as stakeholder input, considering all of those processes that we went over as a committee. And the, the, the committee and stakeholders' intent was to decrease out-of-school suspensions without compromising student safety. Second was to decrease the general consequences to keep students in school and in the classroom as much as possible due to its detrimental effects on student outcomes. They also had the intent to clarify and reorganize some categories for greater understanding. And it is important to clarify again that not all the proposed changes of the committee were included. A great majority were, but it also went through that inter, in that procedural internal review that we go through as a district. So that is part of the procedure for tonight. Finally, in addition to the recommendations relating to the 503.3 Administrative Regulation or the matrix, the committee recommended the following for our system and for this work to continue into its future iteration. To support ongoing focused efforts on identifying systemic issues impacting student behavior responses, with a particular focus on analyzing and dissecting our discipline data further. Facilitate supportive adult mindsets focusing on anti-bias and trauma-informed principles. To strengthen the commitment to justice currently stated in our handbook. And provide proactive interventions in social, emotional well-being. Promoting tier-one practices for environment, relationships, and social, emotional learning. And create and implement sustain and sustained tier-two and tier-three interventions. Use a tiered, clarify a tiered use of the STAR response, and strengthen administrative readmission meetings and increase use of restorative practices in our system. Finally, to activate district-level learning structures, the social, emotional behavior implementation teams to collaborate with and support building level teams to deliver designated social, emotional practices, and integration and collaboration with meetings for disciplinary administrators, which was happening in our district prior to the pandemic with some disruption. So we are looking forward to bringing those opportunities for collaboration in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. I will hand it back to Jill. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Violetta and Stephanie. This is a new business item tonight. It'll come back to you as old business for Action in June. At this point, the three of us are available for any questions that you may have. Otherwise, you may take this under advisement for Action in June.
Excellent. Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments for the committee from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
I have a question. I really like the committee's rationale and the outputs about the goal of, we've talked about this for a long time, but the goal of decreasing out-of-school suspensions, making sure that they're not near the students in our district, and I like that. I am amazed that you went out and did seventy-five interviews, so this really is District 196-owned, and we've talked, you've talked to people, a lot of people, that was just one part of it, to help build this. I really like the words that you used when you talked about responsibly supportive. And I feel like that's what you were looking at. I mean, you can see that mirrored in all of the things that, that you've done. Is it responsibly supportive? Is it responsibly supported for the, the building? Is it responsibly supportive for the student who might be in trouble? Is it responsibly restore, supported for the teacher who might be having issues with, with the issue or problems? My question is, so I like all of that. I really like that. And I like the, it's, you know, it's always District 196, it's continuous, continuous improvement. My question is, when we, when we put this into place, and how will we, how will we continue to monitor? I mean, is this going to be, I know you're not going to have... I mean, is this going to be, I know you're not going to have monthly meetings. Well, maybe Violetta would. Like to have two-hour meetings once a month for, but how are we going to monitor that? And I really do like the recommendations for the future. So do we have a way to put those into practice, to support people that are working on that, to raise all boats in the line of this?
Sure. I'll take a stab at that. And Stephanie and Violetta may have some answers as well. As far as how will we monitor it, I have two thoughts about that that come to mind. One, our Directors of Secondary Education and Elementary Education continue to review the data several times a year to see what are students being suspended for? How many days of suspension are they receiving? Where do we have problem spots in the district? Where do we have students who are out of school too often? Where do our families feel as if school is not safe, or perhaps we need to tighten up in the other direction? So it's something we're always monitoring to see what the numbers look like, and so that is a part of the answer to your question. The other thing I would say is through the process itself of annual review. So every year, we do reach out to our school communities to get their input, and we'll hear from them, particularly principals, but also families, on what is or isn't working and what could be improved as the years go on. Yeah. You had a second part of your question.
I have a question.
Oh, absolutely. The other thing that the team has suggested putting in place is a return to meetings by disciplinary administrators. So every building, at least at the secondary level, have certain administrators that do more with student discipline. They used to get together across the district to kind of compare notes. How are you handling this? How might I do it differently? Making sure that consequences are consistent across the district. We're looking for a return to that so that there's more sharing to make sure that we truly are being consistent in exchanging best practices across the district.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Sachin.
Thank you. As someone on the Policy Committee, I want to just thank each of you for all the amazing work that has gone into it. I mean, you had a 27-person committee, multi-stakeholder, multi-perspective, coming up with this, and the research that backed all of this up helps us get to this wonderfully thoughtful place. Violetta, you mentioned the word informed and thoughtful, and that's so true, because I know even in the time that we spent going line by line, oftentimes with a lot of spirited and thorough debate, I think it just showed the thoughtfulness that went into creating each of those line items. So I want to say, from someone on the Policy Committee, not only do I endorse it and I support it, I'm also grateful for the work that goes into that as well. So thank you, and really looking forward to the next stages in here as well. Thank you.
Bianca.
First, the work is pretty immense, and you did a beautiful job of summarizing it. That makes it seem like it was a lot easier than it probably really was. I do have a question, and sorry to be kind of nitpicky on it, but when you look at our alcohol and tobacco policy with intent to sell, it does not result in immediate expulsion like it does for chemical. So a student, I assume intending to sell a THC vape cartridge in ninth grade would get an immediate expulsion. Why is there a difference there? And then it looks like you've made some really nice changes to the possession, chemical, under Chemical Section 14, possession, under the influence, attempted possession or sharing and use, that, you know, has this recommendation for chemical assessment, which I think is great. Why is there a difference for the intent to sell of chemical versus alcohol and tobacco? Instead of maybe like adding a diversionary program for your first offense as opposed to direct to expulsion?
So I'll attempt an answer at that, and certainly Stephanie and Violetta may want to add to that. Some of it is historic. So historically, this district has treated them differently, and alcohol has always had a decreased response relative to chemicals. This year, we took a hard look at all of those categories and reduced across the board, again, with kind of the idea that you articulated diversion may be better, seeking out opportunities for students to receive an assessment may be a more appropriate response. It does, though, continue what has historically been true, where there is a difference between chemicals and alcohol historically. So we reduced everyone, but the disparity between the two continues. You know, that is something that we can continue to look at. What I will tell you is we're not experiencing much presence of alcohol sale or even possession in our schools. It's predominantly THC products with respect to chemicals that we're seeing. So there's not much impact in terms of the provision on alcohol. We just don't see it very often. Doesn't answer your question, but just to give you some data around the topic.
So as the state goes to legalize more products, maybe this would be an opportunity to break, because it looks like you broke it out for felony-level drugs in the next section, to further refine that. So I don't know. I feel bad, like picking on that one item, but it seems like there's an opportunity for us to do some intervention first in that category as it is becoming more common versus alcohol and tobacco.
I appreciate those comments. That is something that came up with some members of the 503.3 AR Committee. There continued to be more consensus around having some consequence in addition to some diversionary practices, but that is a sentiment that was certainly heard from some corners of the district. Do the two of you, Stephanie?
Excellent question. I would just add, in addition to what Jill has already named about that further analysis, is that work that my colleague Deb Mayer and I, our Health Services Coordinator, plan to embark on in the next school year is really examining what that chemical health screening could look like, so that we are doing just what you're saying, positioning ourselves to support our students and get them on a pathway to care.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Excellent. I would just like to say real quick is that a lot of comments made, but I just want to say thank you also for going through and introducing all the committee members. I know that this is 15 slides that can look like to the general public, but there's a lot of information that goes into it, a lot of discussions, every single line item going through with a fine-tooth comb. So thank you to all of you for your work on here, and also all the committee members that were introduced. My only one request, only one request, is, is there anything we can do to jazz up the title of this committee? It just doesn't roll off the tongue, 503.3 AR.
We can't even name it 2.0.
2.0, yeah. Another one.
We already have 2.3.2.
Right. Excellent. All right. Thank you so much, and we'll see you back on June 12th. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I would like to call up Mr. Tom Petterstun to the podium to discuss the 2024-25 school calendar.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'll be referring to the proposed school calendar for the 2024-25 school year. This planning calendar was developed and reviewed by district and building administrators, representatives from the Dakota County United Educators. We will provide a calendar specifically for families to clearly identify school days once the calendar is approved. I want to highlight some of the characteristics of the proposed calendar for you. Similar to our current school year, middle school and high school students will have two days prior to Labor Day. This allows a calendar where all grades K through 12 finish school on the same day in June. We continue to have student assessment days for elementary students prior to Labor Day, with the first regular school day for grades 1 through 5 on September 3rd. And as we did this year, our kindergarten students start with two-half-day transition days the week prior to Labor Day, and then begin full days on Wednesday, September 4th. Winter break will be eight days in length, and spring break continues to be the last full week of March. The last day of school is June 5th, and in that, this is the first reading as new business, and I plan to bring it back at the June 12th School Board Meeting for approval as old business. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much.
See on June 12th.
It's always nice when, I hate saying the word easy, but we've had a lot more challenging calendars to have to work through in the past, so this one, a little less challenging.
Sounds great.
Right? Yeah.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you in June 12th. All right. We have nothing under other action items tonight, which brings us to our School Board and Superintendent updates. Are there any school board members with items they'd like to share tonight?
Okay.
They're gonna, okay. Bianca.
So first, I got a great opportunity to spend a lot of time at a variety of district events. Kindergarten open house, band concerts. I don't know if it's not quite sponsored, but the South of the River Powwow was lovely as always, and the One District Many Voices was great. We really enjoyed, my whole family and I enjoyed that. And then being part of the Apple Valley High School Innovation Review was great. I loved that. So hopefully, this is to the students who said we may need to come before the board. I hope you do. I hope you present your project before the board. That was great. But in all of these, I had several staff members come up to me, so I'm going to bring this forward. I don't know if it's really the right place. Kaia, did she leave? Oh, darn. May 2nd was, I'll call it Childcare Hunger Games Day. So to get into childcare, if you were not on the priority list, you had to be up at 12:01 to try to get into the SAC program for next year. And it's Teacher Appreciation Week, right? So I would suggest that as we look at our contract with the YMCA, that we maybe add staff to the priority list so they aren't struggling to find childcare, especially since there are quite a few locations that do fill up. I think there's a lot of good reasons behind that that I would be glad to share later, but just something to consider as it came up in a variety of places from different folks, so.
Thank you. Good feedback, Bianca. I saw Superintendent Krieger taking notes, and I have been that parent that had a midnight alarm in the past, so I know what you're talking about. Sachin.
Thank you. I just wanted to take an opportunity to appreciate and recognize Art for receiving the 2003 McKnight Fellowship Award, and well-deserved, and I'm just so, it's so great that we're starting to see your work get the recognition that it truly, truly deserves. So congratulations to you.
Any other updates from board members? Superintendent Krieger?
Okay. This is a little hard to believe, but tonight is the last regular school board meeting before graduation ceremonies begin for the class of 2023. So on behalf of the administration, I want to congratulate the more than 2,100 seniors who will graduate from District 196 this year. We recognize them for their hard work and perseverance to achieve this milestone and wish them all the best in the next chapter of their lives. Commencement ceremonies for our four comprehensive high schools will be held on Saturday, June 3rd. Our first graduation ceremony is the Native American Cultural Honoring Ceremony this Saturday, May 13th at 1:00 p.m. at Erickson Park in Rosemont. And we will have a number of graduations being held for other district schools and programs later this month and into June. So go to our website to get a complete list of when those graduations are, where they are, and please do attend as many as possible because they are all very unique and special and really wonderful ways to honor the achievements of our students. And tonight is also the last school board meeting before our bond referendum special election, which is tomorrow, Tuesday, May 9th. So if you're eligible to vote and you live in 196, please be sure to vote tomorrow between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. To find out where you go to vote, go to pollfinder.sos.state.mn.us, and they'll tell you where to go in the morning. And it's very important, special election to address facilities and equipment needs. We want to make sure that everyone understands what the ask is, what the cost is, and what the impact will be on District 196. So please, please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is Monday, June 12th at this time. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Bianca, second by Sachin. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Right.
Aye. Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. We are adjourned.